Hello and welcome to All About Boston. I'm Seth McCoy. Tonight, I am thrilled to be joined by Mayor Marty Walsh. This is the first ever appearance on the program with the mayor. And with so much happening in the city, it is sure to be an interesting conversation. And in our second segment, I will be joined by City Council President Michelle Wu. Council President, who is focused on transparency, will talk about her vision for the council. Stay tuned for a great show. And welcome to the program. Joining me is Mayor Marty Walsh. It's the first time that he's been on the program. I'm very excited to have you.
It's great to be here.
Thank you. This is actually our first show of the new year as well, so it's even much more important to have you here.
I like your setup too. It's a pretty cool setup.
I know, right? We tried to do it sort of like late night style.
Yeah, it's good, you know.
Makes people comfortable, hopefully.
Absolutely.
We'll have a conversation. I am going to get right into it though, because we only have a half hour with you. So I'm going to start off with Boston Latin School.
Yep.
There's been a lot of issues, not a lot, but there's been an issue there with some racism. It's sort of been going back and forth in the press. I know that you want to just talk quickly about that.
You know, it's a tough and sad situation. Young people should be going to school to learn, not have to deal with what they're putting up with these two young girls and some other students in the school. You know, this issue was happened last year, which is even more frustrating that it wasn't brought to my attention, or we didn't deal with this issue last year. And certainly have some concerns. And we're working now, Superintendent Tommy Chang has been working with some issues in how to put some programming in place for this year, and then, well, how do we look at this long term, look across the district? My concern is that a lot of adults are in the conversation right now. And I think, in some ways, they're losing sight a little bit that we have young people involved here. And I think that, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks, things will calm down and quiet down. But these are young people. They want to learn. And I met with these two young women, and we sat down, and basically what sums it up, they said to me, "We want to be students and learn. That's our goal, and that's what they should be focused on."
Right.
They shouldn't be focused on worrying about being, you know, discriminated against, or being attacked through social media, or having to deal with any of this stuff. And certainly, it's a priority of mine. And again, the fact that this went on for so long, or happened so long ago, it wasn't addressed is a real concern of mine. And Tommy Chang has made it very clear that this will not happen again, that when we have an instance, whether it's race, or bullying, whatever it might be, we're going to deal with it immediately.
Yeah, you have obviously a lot of tough issues around the schools. You know, you said in the state of the city that you wanted to hear from students, so it's refreshing to hear that you met with the two women involved in Boston.
It may have been more than two, but we had to meet, it was good. It was, and you got to, the kids have a different insight. They see things so differently than adults do. And I think that that's the one thing when we talk about, there's meetings all over the city about this.
Right.
And really, we have to keep it in mind here, that we have students that are trying to learn how it's affecting their life, how it's affecting their opportunity and their time at the school. And Latin School's a great school. Certainly, we have to deal with these issues, and there's some issues here to deal with. But we need to allow the kids to go back to being students and focusing on their future.
Definitely. Let's talk a little bit about the school budget, because that's another topic with schools. There was talk in the paper the other day, $50 million deficit. Your office came back and said it's actually 10 million. Where are we?
Yeah, there's not a 50, there wasn't, never a $50 million deficit. There was a letter that went out that talked about potentially structural deficits and deficits. The deficit, and I met with on this topic today in the office, the deficit was $30 million. And we've been able to make, not we, the school department's been able to make some adjustments and some cuts in central office, and also in some other programming. And we have a ton of new initiatives, so it's not like we're cutting out programs. We're actually, some of the cuts are happening because of new programming. So the district's not getting less money. The money's being reallocated to other programs. And, you know, the way I look at the budget, last year, we funded the school budget at $1 billion 13 million. This year, we're funding it at $1 billion 27 million. That's an increase in my book. We have to make sure, we have roughly $20,000 per student costs in the school district. We have a system of 57,000 kids. We have 90,000 seats. So we have buildings that are on full. We have a lot of adjustments we have to make. And what we have to do now is really, how do we fix the budget, get the budget under control, so as we implement new programming and improve the education system in our district, how do we do that?
Right.
And again, there's a lot of good intended voices around this conversation, but I think it's the beginning of the stage of the process. And, you know, this happens almost every year, where the people are outraged in the streets, and then the day they get fully funded. We're going to be, the school department's going to be putting a budget in front of the city council that's a fully funded budget, showing the increases that we've made there, showing some, talking about some of the adjustments we've made there, and we're going to move forward. I mean, we can't continue to keep throwing money into a situation and put programs in that don't work. And I've asked the school department to go back and look at the programs that aren't working, and let's adjust those.
Well, and I think, and I'll say this, you don't have to, but you also inherited this issue. It's not like this, you know, in 2016, the Boston School Department needed to be fixed. This has been a longstanding problem. And so you're sort of walking into it as the new mayor. This is only the, you know, your first term, second year of it, and you've got to really take a hard look and see what's working, what's not working, and how it can be fixed. And I think, I will say that, I don't have a kid in the schools, but I would say that you're actually, you're looking at it.
We've put forth a lot of initiatives. This year in the budget, we're going to increase our preschool seats by 300 seats. Some people are recommending, why don't we just not increase the 300 seats and fully fund the programs that are in the schools? Because that's not forward thinking. Forward thinking is making sure that we provide more opportunities for preschool. We're looking at redesigning our high schools. We're in a mode right now to redesign our high schools. We're in a mode right now at looking at assessment of all our buildings across the district to see what buildings have to be renovated, what has to be fixed. We need to build new schools, which the answer is yes to that question.
Right.
We're also looking at extending the day. And we have to put the extension of day, the school day, on hold this year, because we have 22 different start times. And we're negotiating contracts, and we have to figure out, we have to get some changes in the contract, so we're working on that. So there's a lot of good things happening in our schools too, and there's a lot of challenges. We have schools like English High School, the MCAT scores have gone up. We have schools, we have great schools. We have the Perkins School in South Boston, which is a little hidden jewel in the all colony housing development. How do we make sure they have the supports? We have to make sure that we don't lose more schools to the state for underfunding, for schools at a level four going down to level five. Our goal is to make sure that every child that enters the school system has an opportunity to be successful when they graduate high school, and that's put them on a pathway to college or pathway to career. And, you know, so we have a lot to do. I'm not saying it wasn't done in the past, but you can't just keep throwing money at a situation and not making the adjustments. It's just not sustainable as a city. The school budget's roughly, almost a little more than a third of our budget. 57,000 kids, 20,000 per kid, $1.27 billion. The return there for the kids isn't there.
Right.
And I'm going to continue to move forward to make sure that the kids have an opportunity to be successful. That's my goal. If people want to criticize me for it, that's okay, because my job as mayor is to make sure we provide the best opportunity, and that's what we're going to do. And that's what our goal for this year is. We have a new superintendent. He's been on the job literally about five months. We have a lot of new people in the school department.
Which, by the way, the new building, the bowling building, is amazing. I love, so Dudley Doe is obviously right there, Dudley Cafe, it's just if people...
When you go up in the building, the office workers there, the staff of the school department, there's no walls. There's no offices. It's collaboration.
Right.
And it really, it's going to change, and I ask people to bear with us. I mean, my goal is, and, you know, people will take to Twitter and tweet about me. That's fine. But my goal is to make sure that every child has an opportunity to be successful. Because if we have kids on pathways to success, what will happen is, our crime rate will go down, our income inequality rate will close, we'll have more opportunities for employment. All the stuff we're doing around jobs is to make sure that we give kids an opportunity, kids in our system, to work in those jobs.
Which is a perfect segue. It's almost like we planned this, but we really want to talk about your executive order for minority and women-owned businesses to basically provide a better opportunity for them to get contracts within the city. And then part of that also is the economic inclusion and equity agenda that you've unveiled. So let's talk a little bit about that.
Well, it was explained yesterday, Joyce Faribault did a nice job explaining this. About 16 years ago, this executive order was in place, where we were doing better on women and minority-owned businesses working on contracts, whether it would be architectural contracts, professional services, construction, engineering. And the executive order at that point was taken away, because there was a lawsuit going on in Denver, Colorado. They were being sued for the same thing. And at the time, the city made a decision to pull out of this and not do this, and the lawsuit in Denver was won, meaning it wasn't overturned, so it stayed in place, and the city never addressed it. And really, what it does, it lowers the benchmark for contract services in different, there's a whole bunch of different categories, but under, in some cases, under $10,000, under $2,000, $500,000. It allows women and minority-owned businesses the opportunity to get in on the ground floor in a lot of ways, and build up their capacity to be big companies. It also, it's not so much about raising that opportunity for bidding, it's about, we're also throwing supports around it. So we're going to give businesses business support, so they can grow and thrive. And that's what's been lacking in these four different industries in a long time. And we do quite a bit of work, and the interesting thing is, we're working with the state on this as well. So rather than make it a complicated situation, we're making it more streamlined, so the state and the cities can work, and the city of Boston can work together. You know, a lot of great feel yesterday at City Hall. There was a lot of businesses that we're very excited about. A lot of people said that this is what's needed, to make sure that opportunities happen for many, not a few.
What are some of the business supports that are being offered?
Basically, support services on administrative assistance and back of the house stuff. What happens is, you have companies, let's say, construction, you have companies out there that the owner is everything. The owner is the owner, the owner is the architect, the owner is the engineer, the owner is the bookkeeper, and that person has the ability to get jobs, but they just can't keep up on all of that stuff. So we're going to be able to help them, how do you come up with a business plan? How do you come up with a plan that works for your business, whatever it might be, whether it's, you know, whether it's different services, it could be anything. And so that's kind of the big thing. And our Office of Economic Development, which wasn't in the city of Boston two years ago, is now being built out. They were the ones who helped bring GE to the city of Boston. And we're working really focusing, being laser focused on giving supports around small businesses and how do they grow? Because the small businesses of today are the big businesses of tomorrow. And as you hear, you will hear in this presidential election, that, you know, small businesses, the backbone of America, they're the backbone of Boston.
Right.
So if we can give as many supports and give as many people opportunities for success, it'll be a good thing.
So let's get into a little bit more about the economic inclusion and equity agenda. So there are four themes: income and employment, wealth creation, business development, and economic mobility. So the first one, income and employment. What are, what's the goal? I know part of this is also with my brother's keeper.
Yeah, my brother's keeper. We're also going to do disparity study. That's really going to look at these areas, and really look at what's lacking in the city of Boston, and how do we do that? I mean, when we look at the economy, when we look at opportunities, you know, we are, we're number one in a lot of areas in Boston, but unfortunately, we're also number one in income inequality. So it says to us that there's a lot of rich people and a lot of poor people, and there's a big gap in the middle. So these four themes that you mentioned, we have to make sure that when it comes to employment, we have to make sure that we have people prepared and trained and ready to move with that. We've got a $3 million grant from the federal government that's going to help us with job training. We've already launched a ton of programs in the city. And when I say job training, not training somebody for a job that they might never get, train somebody for jobs they can get. And I think it's about how do we create better opportunities for employment.
Right. We were talking off camera, not you and I, but David and I about, so Miguel and I, Miguel's my fiancee, we bought in Fort Hill in 2013, and we got in right at the...
Beautiful neighborhood.
Beautiful, absolutely. Got in at the right time, though, because, so we bought a condo. We'd like to buy a single family. And we're almost priced out of our own neighborhood. Not almost, we are priced out of our own neighborhood. You know, I was telling David, there's a two-family that people that we know are selling, but because of how Fort Hill has grown so much, part of it is because Dudley is becoming so attractive to people, the asking price for this two-family home is almost $700,000, which some people might say, "Well, that's normal." But this house needs a ton of work. And so for people like me and Miguel, if we wanted to get that, I mean, we'd have to sell our condo, which is not what we want to do. We want to keep that as rental. So part of the issue too, I think that is part of your struggle, is finding people like me and Miguel who want to stay in the city, buy in the city, not go to Hyde Park, no offense to Hyde Park and Councilor McCarthy, but...
He's a great man, though.
He is a great man, but we're, you know, we want to be city central.
People want to live in different parts of the city. And Evan Hill had a house go for a million dollars last year. First time a million dollar home, I think, in Evan Hill. And it is a problem. In our housing plan, we launched a housing plan a year ago, last October, to kind of combat some of those escalating prices. And really, not just buying, but renting. And I was in Miami last week for the conference of mayors, and we were being driven by somebody, and he was talking about, we asked, I asked him, "Is Miami expensive?" He said, "Oh, my God, it's crazy." And he said, "I just bought a house, I bought a condo," he said, "800 square feet for, I think, $175,000." And I started laughing. And I thought to myself, then I thought, really thought to myself, about income inequality. If people in Miami think that that's expensive, which it is, I guess, coming to Boston, I think that same apartment, 800 square feet in the North End is like $600,000, maybe more.
Well, there's a one-bedroom around the corner from us, it's 950 square feet, they're asking, you know, $260,000. And for, which again, is great for me and Miguel who own our place, because ours is a three-bedroom, two...
None of a family.
Right.
Makes it more difficult.
Right, exactly. And so, you know, and we don't want to sell either, but...
And it goes back to jobs. I mean, it goes back to the four points you talked about. A lot of it is quality of life and being able to live in the city of Boston. And when we talk about what we're doing, we've laid some good foundation down. You know, because of our success and our growth, there's very positive, but there's also another flip side to that coin, which shows that the disparities is going to continue to grow. And we have to, that's why when we talked about education earlier, it's important that our young people that are in school are on a pathway, whether it's college for a career, or whether it's a trade, so that they can earn a living if they're not going to school. We have to continue to do that. People are being priced out of the city. And what happens, we lose the fabric of our neighborhoods, we lose the opportunity for what our neighborhoods are made up of, the diversity of our neighborhoods, and all of that. We can't do that in Boston.
And I think you're right to point out the trades, because we need to focus on young men and women going into trades, not just college.
Trades, and then coding, we're graduating in class tomorrow, coders with Operation Exit in the city of Boston. We have schools in Boston, the coding in kindergarten, and that's important to do. I mean, the world's different. I was over at, I travel schools all the time, but I was at the Margarita Menendez School today, and they were talking about what they're learning, about art and culture and math, and biology, and science, and engineering. Those are all, and Boston Arts Academy, another great school in our city. And Madison Park is a great school in our city. They're turning that school around, and we have to continue to build, because the challenges that you and I are having today with these classes, they're not going down anytime soon. So we have to try and figure out a way so we can keep people in our city.
More affordable housing for people.
Yes.
Making sure that when we're building condos and more housing.
Well, we set records this, last year, 2015, we set a record for most housing starts. And it was the second time on recorded history that the moderate low-income housing outpaced the high-end housing. The year before that, 2014, is when we set the record from, I think, a 16-year record. So we're building more housing, we're building more affordable and workforce housing, but we need to do it at a better, faster pace.
Right, and I think that's something that homeowners and people in the city of Boston need to understand too. In order for prices to come down, you almost have to build up your density, so everything else comes down. And I think that's a hard thing for people to kind of look at, when they see all these things going up in their neighborhoods.
And Boston's growing. I mean, our population right now, according to 2014 numbers, 656,000 people, which is the largest population since the '60s. If you look at the last four years in Boston, not including '15 yet, the population growth was larger in four-year period than it was in the '70s and '80s.
Excellent.
Or '80s and '90s, excuse me.
So we're, I'm getting off of the more serious topics, and I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that I've noticed since you came into office. Number one is the 3-1-1.
Yes.
So it used to be Citizens Connect, now it's 3-1-1 on your phone, if you have the application, which I encourage everybody.
If you don't have it, download it.
You should definitely download it.
Boston 3-1-1.
I use it all the time. I think it's great, but I will, my one criticism that I hear from people is that sometimes they'll show that the situation's been taken care of, but it actually hasn't. So how would you tell people to...
We're working on that. We're trying to fix it. There is some problems there still. The way it's supposed to work is that if somebody doesn't call in, and they take a picture, and they send it in, and they're supposed to get a picture back from that situation after the crew went out and fixed it.
That's...
So that should be fixed now. And what's interesting about 3-1-1, when we transferred over, we prepared for the call volume to go up four times. It actually hasn't gone up four times, because more and more people are using the app, because they feel a great response from the app.
I love it. So when I walk my dog in the morning, I have my phone.
You see something, you take a picture?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I will say, for the most part, my experience has been very good. I put in my photos, and then I walk by, sometimes even later that day, and the situation's done.
Yeah, we have a great young person running that office now, Murphy, he's in there running the office, and he's really done an incredible job up there.
That's great. So this sort of ties into it, but I also have noticed that since you came into office, if I have to call the city, whether it's the tax department or parking, the customer service that you get on the front end is a lot more pleasant.
Yes.
Did you do some training?
Yes. Yeah, it's important. I mean, we are, our office, I am paid by the taxpayers of Boston, the people in, working for City Hall are paid by the taxpayers of Boston. We work for the taxpayers of Boston, the residents of our city, and we've asked people, you know, to be more friendly. You still get the occasional person that might be on the phone that's having a bad day, and sometimes public employees have bad days. But we, first thing we did, we changed, we put greeters at City Hall, and people were shocked that there were greeters there. And then, you know, asking, treat people, treat people as you want to be treated. That's kind of the motto. And they've been great. And even our workers in the streets have, you know, been great. You know, people want to, you know, people call, when they call City Hall, they're calling because that's the most important issue in their life at that particular moment, and they should be greeted with respect and with somebody on the phone that was willing to help.
Yeah, I got to say, the first time I called after you came into office, I literally hung up, and I was like, "That was strange." Because they were actually...
Because when I was a state representative, we always treated people good. And I want people treated well.
Yeah, and I'll say, I mean, I'm a public employee. I worked at the city council, I worked for Mayor Menino, I work for Audit a Bump now, but that was always the way I was taught as well. So it was sort of, it was refreshing.
Yeah, so we're trying to do that across the board.
Absolutely. So I know you're out campaigning for Hillary Clinton.
Yes.
Who will be our next president.
President, yes. First female president.
Yeah, that's my official, that's who I'm with. I'm with her.
Not that, I guess I shouldn't say first female. She will be the first woman president, but she's clearly, there's no question about it, when you think of, when you look at all the candidates that are running for president, and people can argue with me if they want, there's nobody more qualified to walk in the first day and be able to represent the American people in office. You know, her time, prior to her being in public life, what she did in her legal career as the first lady of the United States of America, she was a first lady who was active, meaning that she got involved in the healthcare bill, although it didn't pass. She was involved in, involved in a ton of different issues. Went on to be elected to the state senate, Dina, the United States Senate, New York City, New York State, represented New York State, did an incredible job there, then went on to Secretary of State. And clearly, she has a record, and people are going to go after her on her record and find something on the record. Everyone has a record, I mean.
Right.
But it's not about one issue, it's about how does, what's the overall theme of what we can do.
Right.
And what I've seen in this election, it's been sad, because I think that the respect of that office is not being upheld. And I heard a great story one time about Ronald Reagan. Ronald Reagan wouldn't walk into the Oval Office with a sports coat on. And I don't think people respect that office the way it needs to be respected. It's the highest office in the land. It's tremendous pressure on that, on that office. You just look at the last two presidents, George Bush and Barack Obama, you look at the day they went into office and the day they left office, you see how much they aged in eight years. And so you need somebody who understands what's going on, and it's a very stressful office, and we, I am campaigning for the secretary, and I'm...
So you want people to go out and vote on Tuesdays, Super Tuesday.
Yeah, regardless who you're voting for. I mean, I know the other side will yell at me for saying this, but go out and vote.
Right.
Go out and vote. I mean, people died for the right for us to go vote.
Right.
We're a free country, because people, whoever you vote for, go out and express your right by going out to vote. You know, don't sit on the sideline yelling about people, Hillary Clinton, Bernie Sanders, Donald Trump, Marco Rubio, whoever it is. Go out and vote and express yourself. And I think it's important for people to get out there. You know, it's sad, because presidential elections, you'll have 70, 80% turnout in November.
Right.
But in the primary, you'll have, you know, I don't know what they expect the turnout is, let's say it's 25%.
Right.
That means 75% of the eligible voters to vote didn't go out.
Right. Super voters, like you and I will be voting, but...
I vote every, I vote all the time.
Right.
It's just sad that people aren't voting.
Right, I agree. And I talk about this on the show all the time, especially for city elections, that people aren't getting out there and voting.
Just go out and vote.
Right.
You know, we had the first, I'm not sure the percent, I think in the mayor's race, I want to say there was, I think, 40% electorate voted. It was the first time in 20 years there was an open seat, 40%. So that meant 60% sat at home.
Right.
It might have got up to 50. But it needed, people, it should have been 80, 90%.
Exactly, I agree. So we are almost at the end of the show, and every show, I also talk about my favorite place to go in the city of Boston, which is FOMU. I don't know if you're familiar, they have a location in Alston, and then also one in Jamaica Plain. Vegan, I'm vegan, I don't know if you knew that, so it's the best place on earth. And if you haven't been, although I think you have, because we're actually going to show a clip, I went and spent some time with Dina, who's one of the owners of FOMU. And so people at home are going to watch that clip. But for you, if you haven't been there recently, you should go back.
I'll have to go back.
It's the best.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank you so much for being here.
Oh, thank you. And I'll be back again. And I know, I look forward to watching your show.
Absolutely. So for people at home, stay tuned for that clip about FOMU. And then also, the city council president, Michelle Wu, when we return. Thanks. So I am so excited to be here because, as you know, I talk about FOMU all the time on All About Boston. So we reached out to you and said, can we come in? And you were so awesome to say, yes, absolutely. So first and foremost, just tell me a little bit about how you and your husband came to create FOMU.
Yeah, so, gosh, about five years ago, we had sort of our regular day-to-day corporate jobs. And we wanted to do something a little different. We just got married, we were starting a family, and so we wanted to do something that we felt passionate about. And one of those things is food, and in particular ice cream, like our favorite in the world. We actually first sort of bought an existing ice cream store and sort of figured out whether we liked it at all. We figured out we did. We loved it, actually. We loved serving people and watching their smiles, and we loved ice cream. We learned a little bit about owning a small business. But the thing that just sort of kept coming back is that we wanted to make our own product. A lot of ice cream that's bought is bought from big manufacturers and just ordered, and there's a lot of just flavorings and preservatives. So we wanted to make something that was an amazing product, that was unique from a flavor perspective. And that was just really thoughtful and had a lot of integrity, the food and the business itself. We were introduced to a man who was about to retire, and who was in the food industry for a long time. And he was looking to sell his commissary and sort of be on hand if we had questions. So we learned a thing or two about ice cream. And as we were making it, we recognized that unique for ice cream didn't necessarily mean like what we would put into it, but what it was meaningful.
Right.
And we sort of fell in love with coconut cream. And that's the base of our signature ice cream right now. We do, we continuously test and introduce different bases too. But as we did that, we thought, wow, there's no preservatives, no stabilizers, nothing weird. So it made for like a really pure base of an ice cream.
A delicious ice cream.
Yes, thank you. So we stuck with it. We were like, you know what? This will be it. This is what differentiates, and this is what makes the product truly, truly thoughtful.
So you weren't intending to have a vegan-specific ice cream shop? It just happened naturally?
It manifested that way.
Which is amazing. Because for me, it was really, this is going overboard, but a little bit life-changing because as somebody who's been vegan since 2005.
Right.
One of the things I couldn't enjoy, which I love, is ice cream.
Is ice cream, yep. And I think that's why it was so important to, that's why the product, and like, unbiased, obviously, but you know, in my opinion, in many people's opinion, is such a good ice cream. Because it wasn't an alternative. I didn't create it because I had to, I created it because I wanted to. And so it just, once we started creating it, we thought, you know what? If we're going down this route, let's make it accessible. Let's make it accessible for people who are sticking to plant-based diets. We should find kosher parf. So let's source kosher ingredients. Let's source really, really good unrefined sugars. And so we were able to make it more accessible to more pools of people. And so by the time we hit open our first store in Alston, we immediately had a following because there were all these people that couldn't have things and then recognized it was great. It wasn't just an alternative, it was a really thoughtful product.
You make everything, you have a commissary in Watertown.
Correct.
The store in Alston, the store here in Jamaica Plain, and you're having another store opening coming up, which is, I'm also excited about because it's close to my house as well.
Right near you, yeah.
Talk a little bit about that and when you expect to open.
We're hoping to open in the spring. So, I mean, it's a process. The building of, our stores are pretty simple. I mean, I think that's one of the things that I absolutely adore about ice cream is the products are simple, the setup is simple, and it makes people amazingly happy. You know, they come in excited and they leave satisfied. And so it's pretty simple to set up, but it's definitely a process, particularly with like permitting and working through the city. So, and there are timeframes that are involved in each step of that process. So we anticipate without any like major hiccups or anything, that it should be springtime. So hopefully May.
Perfect. So what I have to say, if people are coming in, the Pop-Tarts are amazing. I've had all of this, and they're all amazing. Anything else you want to add about FOMU?
No, I mean, I just, it's my baby. I love it. So I'm, I think the world of everything that we do, and a lot, a lot, a lot of thought and hard work goes into every product. You know, we're not adding flavor, flavor drops, and everything is completely from scratch. Our fresh mint chip, we're soaking mint leaves to make that mint. So it's really a product for people who love food and want to taste unique food, and want their food to be thoughtfully prepared and sort of executed and brought to them. Our staff is amazing. You know, they educate people and let them know all about the products and what's in them and tasting.
I was just going to say, that's something that we should remind people, is that when you come in, you can taste all of the flavors that are on the board and then decide what you want.
Yeah.
So, and they can-
Even before you grab a pint or anything.
Right, and they can mix and match if you want to do, you know, a scoop of, you know, cookies and cream and a scoop of avocado, you can do.
Yeah.
You can do both.
Yeah.
So, it's very exciting.
Avocado is a big one that's popular and unique.
It's also one that a lot of people might see it on the board and think, why would I have avocado ice cream? But it's really, really good.
It is. It's sweet. People think it's going to be savory, but it's more like a milkshake.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, I want to thank you so much for letting us in here this morning.
Thank you so much for coming.
How amazing was that and how awesome is Dina? The goodies in there looked amazing, they smell amazing. Actually took a Pop-Tart, and I can't wait to eat it. If you also want to taste all of the goodness that's inside this place, you need to come to this location in Jamaica Plain, visit their Alston location, or when they open their new location in the South End, go there. And so that was me, obviously, in front of FOMU, my favorite place to get ice cream in the city of Boston. So if you haven't been there, you should go. I am joined right now by somebody who I know has been there, and that's the city council president, Michelle Wu. Welcome back to All About Boston.
Thank you. I was expecting some FOMU here, but maybe next time.
Yeah, I know, I should have, I actually thought about going to get it and like just having it laid out. But you know, obviously, we just had Mayor Walsh on the show, and I didn't want to put him on the spot with ice cream in front of him. I think that you and I could probably just dig into it, but I feel like he'd be like, oh, I'm not going to do that. Exactly. Welcome back to the show, though. This is the first time you've been back since you became city council president. So congratulations.
Thank you.
One of your big initiatives, now that you're council president, is transparency. So I want to talk a little bit about that and what that means to you and what that will mean for the people of the city of Boston.
Yeah, transparency is a word that gets thrown around a lot these days. But for me, and I think for my colleagues, it really is about engagement, about not just putting things out there, but really putting them out so that we're inviting residents to participate. We make it very hard in government for people to get involved. You have to show up in person during the day, wait for an hour until all the speakers are done, then you can testify for two minutes. And if you want to find out what happened after the hearing, you really have to call someone or email someone to ask them for the notes. It's not online. So in this day and age, we need to have everything available and accessible. My motto is that you can't ask someone to get involved until they get informed about what initiatives you're talking about and what you can do. So our goal is to, one, really revamp the city council website so that every docket that's been filed is trackable. You can see how long it's been in committee, what the action steps are. And then, two, to really make sure that the calendar has all the documents attached to everything.
So the SAC must be amazed and appreciative of the work that you're trying to do. For those of you at home who don't know what I'm talking about, there's a gentleman named Donald who is on Twitter, I think that's his handle, the SAC, right?
Yes.
And he is very adamant about transparency in the city council and has been talking about this for probably 10 years, I would say.
So I've spoken to Mr. Sacklet on the phone, and he is incredibly intelligent. He obviously always wants us to go further and further. So it's good to have residents, or it's good to have advocates holding us accountable and moving the goalposts.
Yes, absolutely. So congratulations on that. And I think that's a useful tool because I think what you said initially was, you know, people want to go and they want to testify, they want to be involved in city government. But when you go to a city council hearing and you're listening to all the counselors talking, and then they, you know, perhaps city administration officials or other people that are VIP, if you will, the folks on the ground, the, you know, Sally Homemaker and all of that, they're not going to wait around for hours to testify on whatever that particular issue is. So I think it's a, it's good to kind of open that up for people to get more involved.
And the more that people know the topics that are coming before the council or the types of things that we can do, the more we start to see emails or calls coming in saying, what about this idea? I'd like to express my view on this or that. So it's been great.
Well, and you're really great about updating people as soon as the council is done. So every Wednesday, after the council meeting, there's a Facebook post that's put up, and it's out there. So people know exactly what happened.
That was my, I realized in my first term that nobody knew what we were working on it, and that we were talking about all these important issues week to week. And the Globe would cover some things, the Herald would cover some things, local papers would cover more. But it was usually only the most controversial things that made it out into the media. So to really let people know what we were doing, I take notes at every council meeting and then type it up, put it out over social media and an email list. So you can get every detail that you would like to know about the city council.
And of course, if people have stuff they want to bring up, they can always email you as well.
Yes, absolutely.
So I want to talk a little bit about the changing face of the Boston City Council. We have four women on the council now. It's really exciting because to go from one to two and then now four, so-
Still room to double.
Absolutely, and you never know. In what, a year and a half from now, we might have more people, more women out there running. So that'll be great, unless of course, Councilor Baker's proposal to expand to four years, which I support also. I don't know what your opinion is on that, but definitely something worth looking at is the four-year council term.
Yeah.
But what, we could talk about that in a minute. But what's it like now? And obviously, you were able to work with Councilor Presley for a while, but what's it, how is it changing now that there are more women to sort of work with?
Well, there have been some pictures sent around on the council of when different staff members have been wearing the same outfit. So you do have to think a little bit more. No, I'm just kidding. It's-
No, that's true, though, because I will say, I went to a meeting with one of my colleagues, and we literally showed up with the same colors, like black pants and I think it was like a maroon top we both had on. And we had to tell the person we were meeting with that we did not plan it, this is just happens sometimes.
And a wonderful problem to have on the Boston City Council. It's our two newest colleagues, Councilor Andrea Campbell and Councilor Anissa Sabi George are wonderful. They bring such energy, such commitment and motivation to their work and passion. So Councilor Campbell is chairing the new Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and Councilor Sabi George, a new committee on homelessness, mental health, and recovery. They have each already given their first floor speeches. And I think the four of us women bring very different life experiences, very different perspectives, but each committed to the same sort of trying to make families' lives better. And you know, our male colleagues are right there with us on these issues, but I think everybody's individual experiences, whether it's, for me, as an Asian American, as a young person, as a woman, as a daughter of immigrants, it informs how you think about issues, the people that you ask for advice, the people that you bring to the table. So the more that the community is reflected in government, the more voices are heard.
Absolutely. Let's talk about that proposal for a four-year term. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I'm torn. I, you know, as someone who has to run, has now served one term and run for two elections, I would love to not have to do it every two years. Because it does, the reality of campaign finance is that you have to fundraise to run a successful campaign. It takes a while to build up enough in fundraising to have enough to run that campaign. And so you have about a year of really focusing on the issues, and then you have to start to think about, okay, you got to get that election preparation back into gear. At the same time, if we are to extend the term to four years, you know, does that make it harder for new people to join the council and think about running? Do you then have to fundraise twice as much if you're having to wait and people are amassing all their war chests in the off-year? So it's a tricky balance between that sort of wanting our democracy to be accessible, but also wanting it to be efficient and productive.
Right, that's actually a good point, because quite frankly, that wasn't something I considered, is if we go to a four-year term, we're essentially maybe sending a message to some people who might have considered running, that it's not in your, in your reach any longer. That's a good point to make. So it'll be interesting, though, to see how this winds up and what happens with it. I mentioned at the start of the show that the mayor was here to talk about the executive order that he explained that was in place previously in the, in the prior administration for minority and women-owned businesses to kind of give them a leg up, if you will, to get some contracts in the city. And I know that you and your colleagues and the mayor really seem to have this great synergy of working together. So number one, I will ask you, as a minority and a woman, how you feel about this new, this reintroduced executive order? And what you think that will mean for people in the city of Boston?
Yeah, I think it's incredibly exciting. As you say, the mayor and the council seem to be on the same page and are definitely on the same page about the values that we're striving to represent. So the idea that Boston is a city that's in many ways the example of success for other cities. There are a lot of companies wanting to locate here, a lot of, you know, you see construction everywhere. But can we make sure that it's a city that's, whose success really includes everyone? And we have been right there with Mayor Walsh in terms of focusing on inclusion along with building our economy and building opportunities. So I think it's great news. I was excited to be there at the signing of the executive order. The city's procurement processes are the first place we should be thinking when we're talking about wealth creation and investing in neighborhoods. Our dollars should be going to local companies, to encouraging, to building these pipelines for women-owned businesses, for businesses owned by people of color. It's something that we have total control over, unlike a lot of things that we have to go to the state for funding. So every dollar that we are spending as a city should be done very intentionally.
And I think it, you know, he was explaining, you know, this for the small business owner who, you know, is everything in that company. They're the bookkeeper, they're, you know, the person doing the work, they're, so everything. I think it probably sends a sense of relief to those people who are actually doing those jobs now to say, oh, this is amazing, that, you know, the city is going to help me get my business to a, to the next level. So that's really exciting.
It opens up the process because when you have, most procurement processes or RFPs are based on past history. So you can only get the big contracts if you have a history of doing the big contracts, and until we're letting people in.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's that catch-22. We talked a little bit about the schools. So obviously, the school budget is a big conversation point right now. There was a letter that went around about this $50 million deficit. The mayor has said it's not $50 million, but they're obviously dealing with some realities in the Boston Public Schools. What's your take on the whole situation with the Boston Public Schools?
Yeah, we have heard, we have been hearing from families, parents, students, teachers for weeks now about it. It's, and even in the last, basically since I've joined the council, every year around the school budget, it's tough. It's because, largely because the state's aid to the city goes down every year while our costs go up of salaries and benefits. And it takes funding to support a successful school. You know, I haven't, I've had conversations with the administration and with advocates and students and parents. So we'll wait to see what budget comes before the council to really understand where the actual budget gap is. I know that Superintendent Chang is working very hard to try to make sure that we're not just performing all the functions of an urban public school system, but also really pushing on equity and inclusion and closing the achievement gap. We have all the pieces for the best urban public education system anywhere. We are spending about almost $20,000 per student. So the dollars are there, but they're not all getting down to the school level.
Right.
We have some big issues to solve around transportation, around facilities, and making sure that we're solving some of these big mismatches so that we're not asking parents to fundraise such incredibly large amounts just to keep schools going.
Right, and that's something the mayor talked about too, is, you know, you want the kids, the kids need to be there to learn. They shouldn't really be worried about all these other issues that are happening around them. And I think it's refreshing, and I'm, you know, I'm sure you're talking to kids that go to Boston Public Schools as well. It's just nice to see that, those conversations that are happening around the city. It's probably long overdue getting the insight from the kids who are actually in the schools.
Absolutely.
So another issue that came up recently, just yesterday in fact, is this Boston Police Detective's raise. Which, you know, I know that the city council is sort of put in a bad position when they have to vote on raises, whether it be for, you know, other municipal employees or for yourselves. But the city council voted to approve the raise. Tell me a little bit about how, how the thinking went behind that.
Sure. So anytime there's an arbitration award, it's a tough position for the council to be in. And so just for 30 seconds of background in case, because it's a somewhat complicated issue, our public safety unions have a different process for collective bargaining than our civilian unions. They get to go to arbitration if bargaining becomes stuck. And it's because they can't go on strike, like every other union could. If our police and fire went on strike, it's just jeopardizing residents' safety and well-being. So that's part of the state law, saying arbitration happens for these unions only. When arbitration happens, we are moving from a face-to-face conversation between the administration and unions, talking about what's good for the city, and handing it over to outside arbitrators. Whatever they decide comes back to the council, and we can vote it down and send it, send them back to the bargaining table, and maybe they would go to arbitration again. Or we can vote to approve it. And this happens union by union for the public, for the four public safety unions. So the contract, the award that was before the council yesterday was for a 28.7% raise over six years. And for most folks in the private sector as well, that sounds pretty high. It's, you know, there are a lot of factors to the contract, and it was raises of, I think, 2.5%, 1%, 1%, 3, 3, 3 over the last six years. But then there are extra benefits around longevity, risk, and all of, all these pieces. So for the council, because we had, the council had already previously voted on the award for the patrolman, which was around a 25% award, this, to vote down the detectives would have been drawing the line almost arbitrarily.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's an important point to make, is that you would essentially, that if you had voted no for the detectives, you would have essentially had patrolmen who were making more than detectives. So there's really no incentive for a patrolman to want to be a detective because you're not going to get paid the same amount of money. I also think that, again, like when people hear 28%, that's all they hear, but they're not, it's almost like the messages in getting out there that it's broken out into this many years, and it's, it's really on par with what most people get for raises, whether it's a 3% raise, or a 2% raise, or a 1.5% raise. It's just, it gets bundled all in one big package, and it's, for some people, you know, the sky is falling, you can't give them 28%. But that's, again, not the true picture, the true reality.
Right, and we want city jobs to be good jobs, right? We want, as a city, to be investing in people and providing pathways to economic stability. It is important to note that with the police unions getting 25% and 28%, over the same period, civilian unions got about, they got 12.6%. So there has been a gap because arbitration awards have pushed it a little higher. So the council also voted to send a letter to the unions and to the mayor saying, we really hope that in the next round, everybody can sit down together and come to an agreement that's fair for the civilian unions as well. Because every dollar put to this is a dollar that we can't go to our parks or schools and other things.
Exactly, exactly. So we're actually almost out of time, but I know, I want to talk a little bit about next Tuesday, which of course is Super Tuesday. I of course know who you're supporting, but I'm going to ask you the question, anybody, anywhere.
I'm with her, I'm with her all the way.
So Hillary.
Yep.
So what do you think's going to happen on Tuesday? I mean, obviously Hillary Clinton is by far the most qualified candidate out there. What does she have to do in order to be number one in Massachusetts? order to be number one in Massachusetts?
It's about ground game. And it's about getting people out to vote. In this type of presidential primary, it's, it's in March, it's not in September or November. People aren't necessarily thinking and realizing that it's, it's our day to vote. Because presidential primaries, frankly, often aren't necessarily, it's, it might not be as much of a contest in Massachusetts usually. So it's been all about the doors, about the phones. The Clinton campaigns had a great ground game, and I'm, I'm confident that that will translate into votes next Tuesday.
Absolutely. And I know you don't wanna say this, but I will say this. Bernie Sanders is a great candidate. I think a lot of what he's saying makes sense in some ways.
Yeah, resonates.
Right. It definitely resonates. Some of it unfortunately isn't realistic. But if you want somebody who's on the ground, can just start running as soon as they get into the Oval Office, that is Hillary Clinton, she's the most qualified of any of the people running.
And of anyone, almost anyone who's ever run. I mean, think about who else has lived in the White House and taken on policy roles there, has served in the cabinet, has served in the US Senate, has, has a record of getting things done. So that's what I like to see, is people who will be able to, to move forward and actually accomplish things.
And if Donald Trump is elected president by some strange way, we're all gonna be taking off for Canada, or maybe Ted Cruz will invite us to his country of Canada. But yeah, I think it's, it's almost just mind-numbing to watch the Republican candidates, and no offense to our Republican viewers, I'm sure we have some. I wish you had better candidates to choose from. But it's amazing to see what is happening on that side. I just don't even, I don't even have words for it. I don't know what your thoughts are on it.
It's reality TV, and I hope at some point, it will end, and the commercial break will come on, and we'll go back to reality.
I'm still hoping for Donald Trump to actually, when he gets the nomination, if he does, to finally say, you know what? I was actually just doing this for Hillary, and let her win. Which of course is a pipe dream, but you never know, who knows? But again, you're with Hillary, you want people to go out and vote on Tuesday.
Absolutely.
And I know we already talked about FOMU, but we have to, we, we're gonna close the show again with a comment about FOMU, and making sure that you get back there. And I know I'm gonna get there.
We'll launch a Canvas kickoff from there.
Exactly. Yeah, that's a great idea. So I wanna thank you again for, for being here.
Thank you, Seth.
It's always a pleasure to have you.
Great to be here.
And for you at home, thank you so much for tuning in. I wanna thank everybody behind the scenes here for putting together a great show. We'll see you next time.